It is being recorded and televised. Is anyone in the audience recording? Any A and R's, Adam?
No.
Okay. We have to wait five minutes for the first public...
Nope, it's a discussion.
Okay. Discussion on 823 Washington Street, site plan review. Frank Lattis, Latwis for Hertz Corporation. Yes, Frank, are you Frank Latwis?
I'm not Frank, but Frank's the owner of the property. I represent the Hertz Corporation. My name's Matthew Benoit, project manager for New England. I can answer any questions you may have about the application in front of you today.
Why don't you give us a quick rundown of what you're looking to do?
Sure. So, Hertz standard operations, rent vehicles to customers. We don't propose any repairs, any sort of maintenance on these vehicles. They just standard rental operation at this site. I'm not proposing any site modifications. The only things would be a couple of door replacements on the inside. The site is a turnkey operation. Standard hours of business are 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. We'd be open on Saturday, nine to 12:00. Just a three-hour shift. Otherwise, it's point-of-sale contact with customers. They get in on the cars and return them and pick them up during business.
How many cars can you park there?
A quarter of the plan is about nine on there. I don't know if we're going to be able to fit... Our volume right now doesn't even reach nine for customers. So, it's mostly the employees. Probably have about four, five cars onsite at our 143 Washington site at a time.
You didn't include a big plan. You just had the sketch on the back.
Right, it's the existing...
And there's an aerial of the property up.
Correct, right on the boards here. The previous use for this was a...
Can't remove it.
Exactly, exactly, that's correct. It was also granted a waiver for public hearing at the time that they applied, but obviously a different use at the time.
You planning to store any vehicles in the building?
If necessary. I mean, depending on snow, obviously, small cars.
Mail on the ass because every Hertz I've been to, the office is about half the size of this room. And you've got this enormous building with bay doors. I wasn't sure if it was...
Well, when you say "store," they don't typically sit for more than 24 hours. And when we have cars for the day, those are gone by the end of the day and get more in. So, the cars don't stand for too long. And we're not taking any toes or accident cars at this site, so...
No repairs, you say, in the writing?
That's correct.
No maintenance? So, this is strictly a rental? And I know that you do sell cars at auction. This is strictly for rental?
That's correct.
You're just moving from Fuller's, I mean, from upon the place up the street?
That's right, the longer the location is. There is a different division for car sales, to answer your question, and they're not going to be at this site.
I have no other questions.
No, I don't either. Looks like a good use for the building.
There you go.
So, Adam, uh... Site plan application.
And you said you're just doing minor repairs inside the building?
No, no repairs.
No, no, to the building, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they're going to...
Door replacement?
That's right.
Office fit out, that kind of stuff?
That's correct.
Just standard building permit?
That's correct, yeah. And signs, of course, that go along with permit.
Now, what's his next step? He's going to come in with an application?
No. He's submitted his application. His request is to... For the board to vote to waive the requirement for public hearing and to waive the plan requirements based on the site being an existing building with no proposed changes to parking or building. So, the board can choose to do that. They can choose to tell him that he needs to file a full application. Precedent of this board historically, when there hasn't been a change to the site of building, has been to, if asked, consider waiving hearings. But it's certainly not a requirement.
I'd move that we're not required of hearings.
Yeah, the other use that was there, the scratching dent, I mean, I'm just looking at what the neighborhood would see as different. And they had cars coming in and out, such as the Hertz would. And I don't see it as any significant change. It's not going into a food business. It's not all day long. So, we'll vote first to waive the public hearing requirement.
And the motion was made.
Motion was made, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I think we can vote on...
You can take them as a package or individually.
Let me just look at them for a minute. You're going to be installing some security lighting and stuff like that.
It's already on site.
It's already on there.
Yep, there's a spotlight in the... If you're looking at this, it's in the northwestern corner. That closer to the road facing the building, with one big floodlight.
Where the truck is.
And did anybody... You know, the only thing I see is drainage system is... Did anybody look at that? Or nobody would look at that?
No, I mean, this building has been on site since the late '70s. So, you know, it's been an impervious surface prior to the existence of the Stormwater Management Act. So, you know, if he were breaking the hardtop for any reason or choosing to take it down to dirt, we might look at it as redevelopment and try and ding him for a couple of catch basins.
It's a little rough, the asphalt, isn't it?
It is, it is. I mean, it'll later date.
But I mean, even if he brought in and did a top, that's not really changing the characteristic of a hardtop.
We wouldn't increase the impervious area at all. Maybe a blacktop in the future, but not at this time.
Do you... One of you want to entertain a motion to waive, to read them and...
All at once or one at a time?
We can do all at once.
You can do all at once. And you can, I mean, you can even stipulate to as submitted.
State each one.
Yeah. I tried to make a move that we waived them, the site topography, the site lighting, landscape plan, site plan prepared by a professional engineer, proposed system of drainage and drainage calculations.
Second.
As received, Adam.
As received, yes.
Second by Wendy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a vote.
Well, then you have to take a vote on the...
The, uh...
On giving, allowing him to use it as such.
He took a public hearing, was it?
Because you waived the public hearing. You waived the plan requirements. Now, you have to make an affirmative vote on the use.
Use of the building.
Correct. Because the use is by site plan approval. So, you've waived all those requirements. Now, you have to give him the site plan approval.
I will make a motion to provide the site plan approval.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a vote. Good luck.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for the time. Thanks, Adam. Anytime, bud.
All right. Seven, ten. Not quite there.
Discussion as well, so we can move right along.
386 Southbridge Street, site plan review. Wes Dunn, LLC, Dunkin' Donuts, would waive it.
Want me to go ahead, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you're representing.
Yeah, yes, Wes Dunn. For the record, Chris Spurra, just a registered professional engineer with offices up in Middleton, Massachusetts, and we're representing the operator of the Dunkin' Donuts. It's an LLC known as Wes Dunn LLC. And the reason why we're here tonight is somewhat similar to the previous application. What we're trying to do is respectfully request a waiver from the site plan review requirements for a public hearing and the items that are normally associated with a site plan review and the preparation of a site plan, the site topography, site lighting, landscape plan, site plan prepared by a professional engineer, and proposed system of drainage and drainage calculations. This is part of a proposed expansion or an extension to a non-conforming structure. We've got here Assessor's Map 33 lot 85. It's just over two acres. This is the Dunkin' Donuts location across the street from the Auburn Mall. There are three existing buildings on the site. And the Dunkin' Donuts has an address of 386 up front. It's an existing drive-through that most of you, I'm sure, are familiar with. Every so many years, Dunkin' Brands requires their franchisees to update and remodel the inside of the stores. And when those things happen, they ask us, as their site engineers, to take a look and see what kind of improvements can be made, whether to the operations inside or immediately outside. So, as part of the remodel, the applicant would like to square off the building. It's shown here in this darker color. It's a small addition. It's about just under five feet by 12.7 feet, about 62 square feet. And the reason for that squaring off is that they're proposing to add a second pickup window. And the way that's going to work is as folks come into the drive-through lane and place their order at the order board, the second window comes into play during that busy time, which is usually between seven and nine for the Dunkin's locations. They come up and they pay for their order at the first window. And if somebody has a more complicated order, they're going to be asked to move forward to that second window.
So, they go to the first window?
And pay.
If someone asks for a large coffee, black, they get it and pay at the same time and be gone.
That's right.
But if they had 23 things and muffins and sandwiches they were getting, they'd then move to the second window. So, there's ample room for the car when it leaves the first window to pull out and go beyond the car that might be stationed at the second window?
That's right. And the reason... That's the reason for the addition, in order to provide for that room for that second vehicle. Because it was an extension of a non-conforming structure, we also had to make an application with the zoning board of appeals. And we appealed before the ZVA last Thursday. We presented the same plan and the proposal. They actually made some recommendations that they included as part of their approval of the extension. And I can just go over them real quick for you. Obviously, there's an existing sidewalk out in the right of way. That's shown in this tan color. After the Dunkin's opened and through the years, this was always a landscape island out here. But what people... What was happening is folks that were parking out here and walking, they weren't walking out to the sidewalk along the street and they were cutting through the landscape strip. And so, it got all, you know, messy in there. So, they created this brick paver area because that's where the people were walking. And so, one of the suggestions made by one of the members last Thursday was, geez, now that you're squaring off the building, that provides a little bit less of a sight line for a vehicle, even though they're very close to the end of the building, for somebody coming out, let's say, and walking along that walkway. So, they suggested, geez, what about just taking up these pavers and reestablishing that as a nice landscape area? Fill in, you know, as thick as we can with landscaping and force the people to come out to the sidewalk, which by doing that gives a little bit more of a line of sight for a car that's coming through the drive-through lane, albeit they're traveling very slow. But a person in the car will have...
Almost ought to put something there between the corner of the building, the corner being the dot spot, and to where the sidewalk is, like a fence or...
A rail fence, yeah.
Something that people can't walk through at all. Because there'll be the people that walk through that are, you know, they're somewhere else. They come out, they take a right, and they're just walking, or some little kid runs out.
They're texting and they're drinking their coffee and they're not paying attention.
There should be something from the corner. If you point, put your... Yeah, right from that corner to the sidewalk that absolutely restricts passing.
Okay, so off...
It could be a fence. It could be close together bar. It's something that looks... Well, it's up to them. Something that looks... It's right on Southbridge Street. Something that looks fairly reasonable, but does not allow people... I mean, how do you people feel?
Yeah.
I agree. But the other point that I'd like to make about that is, is it your intention also to have that entrance or exit there one way? And maybe a stop sign there? Because now you get traffic pulling in and out, people, you know, coming across.
Well, what my thought was, when I asked the other question, Wendy, is referring to what you said, I assumed it was one way. I've only been there once or twice.
No, there are people pulling in and out.
No, they don't just come off however. They can come off in off Southbridge.
Yeah. I believe they can, especially during the non-busy times.
Because now you're going to have two cars. You'll have one sitting up at that second window, and then you've got the other car, which is only about 18 feet there from my measurements. You've got a car sitting here, and another one pulls out around it, and then you've got somebody else trying to come in there.
Right, you get the one car at the window, out from where that addition is. Then the other guy that got his coffee quick, he's going to go by. He's there. And then where's the other car coming in? And she said it's only 18 feet. We usually require 24 feet for a turning aisle or something.
Right, let me just take a breath and scale it a little bit. I'm unaware... I don't know, Adam, if you're aware of any existing restrictions on...
I am not aware... This was a Burger King.
That's right.
All those many years ago. And they're the ones who left us with this horrible drive-through situation. I don't know that there are restrictions.
Right, so this curb opening is just shy of 45 feet wide.
That curb opening. But I was talking about that, you know, between the two windows and having one car pull out around another one. Now, you've got to, you know, make enough of a swing around the other vehicle that's sitting at the second window waiting for the order.
What you're saying is there's two cars... There could be two cars in right at that entrance and one coming in, even though it's... Is it 45 feet to the radius or is it 45 feet, kind of 90?
So, from handicap, the handicap space to the handicap space where the, excuse me, the wheelchair ramps, from wheelchair ramp to wheelchair ramp, it's 44 feet. So, typical lane width is about 12 feet. So, you know, in theory, you have, you know, a pretty wide area there. And really, the folks that are... Anyone that's making this movement is making the movement to come into the parking area I'm not aware of any restriction. And so, I'm hesitant to say it's okay to restrict it if it's not already restricted.
Can you look at them, maybe?
I'm not aware of any permits for this building. And clearly, there's permits, but as far as site permits... And while there may be no restrictions, clearly, as part of site plan, this board can make recommendations or conditions.
Because without voting on it tonight, I'd like to go look at it. I've really never been...
I've sat there and watched it. I've been in the line, and it gets pretty...
I've been here twice.
And now you're proposing that maybe two of the cars could be pulling, you know, down at the same time. You've got pedestrians and then somebody pulling in off of the street. And I just think it's ripe for, you know, there should be...
And one more person could be coming out of the parking area and heading down.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
So, you could have three or four cars.
Right.
Before I vote, I'd like to look at it.
And you've got a pedestrian maybe coming across that area. I mean, you know, it's just... It seems that it would be, you know, really, really busy in that spot.
What I would suggest is that either if the applicant's willing to concede to one way, or, you know, and clearly, the board can vote on it as they wish when, you know, if they don't feel comfortable with it tonight, that's one thing. The applicant could also propose a new striping plan that would take that 44 feet...
That was going to be one of the suggestions, is a crosswalk catch mark.
Oh, yeah. And the zoning board did talk about requiring new striping for the crosswalk.
Right, if we were going to eliminate that existing walkway there, what I had suggested was creating a new line of striping that ran from wheelchair ramp to wheelchair ramp to sort of focus people, you know, we want them to come out, to come out here before, you know, going back to their vehicle and not, you know, taking them further away, if you will, from the cars to the drive-through.
Yeah, because people tend to come out even when they come out to the sidewalk and then cut at an angle back up into the lot, crossing through that traffic. And you could get, like we said, you'd have three cars heading out and one coming in with another one in back of it. I need to look at it a little closer.
I personally have been there on a Saturday morning at the bank.
Because I've only been there once or twice, so...
I personally have been there on Saturday morning, sitting at the bank and watching what goes on. And the traffic is backed up out onto Southbridge Street. People are trying to pull out of this driveway. There's people sitting here waiting to come around. It can get very, very congested, like you say, at peak times. And I'm just really concerned with the pedestrian piece walking in front of all of them.
And if the board does look at allowing them to restripe and continue two-way, it's a matter of what does the striping plan look like? Because ultimately, it's probably going to be a less-than-intuitive plan for most people because it's going to be a drive-through lane against the building coming out, and then probably a second exit lane coming out again on the left side of the entrance with a third lane of access on the right side. So, it's almost, you know, it's almost like you're driving in England or Australia because you're...
Yeah, you'd be on the...
And not that that won't work. But it is something that may need to, you know, if the board has these concerns, it's something that they may need to explore.
I think right now, you know, where that original window, the existing window is, you know, affords you enough room as you're pulling up to that, you know, where other vehicles are coming in. But now you're proposing that there may be two vehicles waiting there. Like you say, somebody else is trying to pull down around. Now, they're pulling in, like you say, like Australia or in Europe, and you're way over on that and coming up into the driveway on the other side. So, it just...
They might have to get...
The flow doesn't really work well.
So, just to kind of... Can I take a couple of steps back for a minute? The reason why they're proposing the second window, it's something that they've been adding to a lot of locations. Mr. Skavranos, who's the manager of the LLC, owns several other locations in Massachusetts and in New Hampshire. And on all the remodels today, any remodels that are happening, if the site can accommodate a second window physically in the building and the way the inside of the building works in terms of operations, they've been adding them. And again, it's an additional expense, of course. There are no transactions that take place or anything like that. It's strictly during that seven to nine time, when we know it's the most busy at the locations, it allows that queuing to just move a little bit faster to try to get people off of the streets, if they're backing out onto the streets, or just keep people moving in that seven to nine time period. As far as restricting access and that sort of thing, I think if I go back, I think they're probably just going to say, well, maybe we just take it off the plan. But I understand, Mr. Chairman, you want to go out and take a look at it.
Yes.
I'll certainly, you know, explain that to the franchisee.
Well, there are other ways to mitigate the concerns with pedestrians as well. I wouldn't say every time that front door opened, they would have the... They'd have those flashing lights that run the pavement that allow drivers... It's more for the driver than it is for the pedestrian, but to alert the driver that there is a pedestrian in the area. I mean, you know, there are lots of ways to mitigate the pedestrian issue. And that's really, you know, what I'm asking you to think about, like you say, to, you know, look at it and...
Because other than the addition in that window, there weren't no other, you know, really proposed site changes, which is why, after talking to Adam and Nick, we thought it was logical to ask for the waiver for site plan review. And that's why we came tonight.
Right, I want to take a look at it before I vote on any part of it. Just because I haven't, you know, as I looked at it and thought more about it, and I made a couple of notes here last night, but then... It's that pedestrian issue.
Yeah, because you've taken that little bit away that you had before, you know...
There was a little sight distance in order to come around the corner and see it. And then now that we block it, we're going to be directing them to the sidewalk where they have to cross and come right across if they go that way, or else they're going to be coming up. But as you said, you could have the one car at the window, waiting for the long-time window, and then another guy that's at... With by quick, he's pulling by. So, now there's two of them on this 44-foot distance. But then there could be one coming in, and then another one in the parking lot that could be trying to come out. And then there could be people walking, you know, and that's a concern, so...
Absolutely.
I want to go back to the fence issue. If we look at the plan, this dark line is the property line. So, they would be able to put the fence up to the property line. Crossing the property line, they're on the state's property. So, they could petition Mass Highway or Mass DOT to put it on. Mass DOT doesn't have to say yes. And notoriously, they're generally unwilling to let other people put things on their roadway. You're probably lucky that they weren't doing anything on Southbridge Street and didn't find your pavers on their property. But, you know, they're coming out. It's not... I don't want to make it an issue. I just want this board to recognize that if the fence does get put up, it's going to end, probably looks about, what's that, about five or 10 feet short of the sidewalk?
That's... You're talking about from the property line to the sidewalk? It's about five feet.
Well, they can... Even if it's only that with a little act to it, like it shows there.
Yeah, and that, you know, that pushes people away from the building. It forces them to not be up against the building and still have some sight distance. I just didn't want them to go ahead and put the fence up where they could, have somebody drive by and say, hey, we told them to do this, and not have the reason why.
But I would also, and I'm only one member, want you... Request from you to seek the permission from Mass Highway to be able to put it right to the sidewalk.
We'd be happy to. That's District Three. We're working with them right now on another Dunkin's in Northborough. And they're very reasonable, so we can easily... We'd be happy to make that request.
You know, if the flow pattern can be established with safety and we can look at that and put some crosshatching in the lines or whatever, or some arrows and some type of thing there. So, you ought to be thinking about some scenarios we could come in with, and we can do it. Because it does expedite it. It gets them off Southbridge Street coming in by the bank and blocking however, and the other entrance, excuse me, and...
I think that the queue onto Southbridge Street isn't people just trying to get into the lot. I think it's a drive-through queue.
It is.
So, you know, whatever happens with the Southbridge Street curb cut, I don't think is going to mitigate that. It's a matter of the board being comfortable with whatever the situation is, whether it's two out, one in, or three out at Southbridge Street and whatever the applicant's willing to agree to. You know, I mean, clearly, you can condition whatever you want, and they can say, well, that's fine, then we're just going to either appeal it or we're just not going to do this. And we're going to go ahead with what we have.
That's one of the possibilities. I don't know, you know, without going back to them. But we'll, you know, we'll be happy to, you know, visit the site with you, and I'll go back and tell them that you'd like to go out and do a site visit and think about providing some additional striping to, you know, to help direct people better if we're going to have the second window.
You know, and I think what I'm hearing is that everybody's willing to listen to multiple options that would be workable for you. They just want to know that it's not going to remain unmitigated. Because right now, it is, it's like the Wild West out there. You just kind of pull up and you're like, well, I'm here, this is, you know, I want to go this way or that way. So, you can't necessarily have somebody out there controlling that. But if you stripe it, you might at least help them get a little bit of guidance. And I think that's what... If I'm not mistaken, that's what I'm getting from what I'm hearing.
Yeah, there's probably some things. I think you should look at it when you go back at this, the site and the parking and see what you might come up with to help restrict. I mean, it's, you know, I just...
Yeah, that, you know, the fact that it is 44 or 45 feet long is going to, you know, say to people, okay, well, here we are.
Here we are, wide open.
Yeah, and you're going to have a guy over here on the left that's trying to take a left turn with two cars that are sitting there, and somebody's going to want to go straight. It's just, and it already is very zooey. So, if there are some ways that we could just, you know, mitigate that one entrance.
The technical transportation term?
Yeah, zooey. Yeah, it's a technical term. Because the other thing that, you know, you've got the queue for the drive-through. And then the other thing that complicates this is the other two exits. You know, people have a tendency to queue in front of those. So people have to wait until the cars move before they can cut through at the same time.
Nobody wants to let that car out because they might be sneaking into the drive-through lane.
Right.
Well, there's a few homes up there too and some other businesses and there's the motel that has to use that entrance too, the motel's over here.
The bank empties out into that exit?
I think that the residences are all...
Are they all businesses now?
I think it's all businesses up on Howe.
The hairdresser, and there's a hairdresser...
Dentist.
A dentist.
The next one coming up, there's...
Animal Hospital or something?
Yeah, there was a residence up there, but I believe it was purchased.
Then if you go beyond that to the dead stop where you have to run into 290, there's two or three up on the hill and then there's Driscoll's house at the end. And then there was Doos Savage's on the right and one other before Driscoll, Doos Savage. And I think they're still there. One may be that Strawberry's, it's got something in it. One of the first gray house after this building here.
Yeah, and maybe there is, I thought that, I thought they'd all be converted.
It's not a lot of people, but it's people, they need to get in and out.
In and out, yeah.
And the motel, I'm not sure, that's probably 20 rooms anyways.
Right.
And...
I just want to point out, point out to the planning board that the second window, it's not a, it's not something that's going to make a significant difference. It does help a little bit and that's the reason why they're willing to spend the money to do it. But it's not going to be a cure-all for the site by any means. So the, we don't expect, we don't expect the existing conditions to change very much from what it is today. Where they do notice it being helpful is in that short period of time in the morning. So all of these existing...
Yeah, I think people that are ordering those big orders, I got in back of somebody that was ordering like 25 things the other day. And the other one up the other end of the street and I'm saying, oh my God, here we go.
Yep.
And I don't think that they think it's going to stop the queuing onto Southbridge Street. I think that they're using that as an example of an additional problem with the large entrance that's, you know, undirected. And so it sort of driving, drive home their point that some direction, some shape to how the access and egress is happening there.
Not an entrance, yeah, simply something.
You know, or enter here with a sign on where you're striping the entrance in. And, you know, all of these are simple suggestions. I don't know that one or the other is going to satisfy the board. But it's important to at least come up with a couple of...
If it was new construction, we wouldn't have that 44-foot entrance.
I think if it was new construction, they probably wouldn't build it this way.
I think they moved into, you know, the existing...
Yeah, and that's how Burger King had put the drive-through in. And I think that it had been something before Burger King. And Burger King said, we can't survive without a drive-through, let's try and do this.
Right.
Is the history of the site that I've gotten from various people.
Yep. Okay. Anything else, sir?
No public comment. Must these two gentlemen here have something to say? And you're upset, Wendy?
Yeah, I've said what I need to say.
Paul?
Yep.
Okay, so...
Want to reschedule it? Yeah, March 12th would be our next meeting.
Okay.
And 7:15 is the time that I have open right now.
7:15?
Yeah.
How about that site visit?
Oh, we'll go on our own.
Oh, so...
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
We'll go, each of us will go on our own.
You are allowed to go as a group as well.
Yep.
So we might each go as soon as we can and then pop and may want to meet together there just to look at some other things.
So, Mr. Chairman, would it be okay if you just maybe relayed some of your observations or comments to Adam and then I can check, I can check in with Adam? Or you can let me know when I get back to you?
Yeah, if you get, if you get back to me within the week, I'll send all your comments onto him and he can then hopefully get something back to us in time for you to have a chance to review it prior to the next meeting.
March 12th.
You're not allowed to miss it. It's just not possible.
That's another...
It's two weeks, yeah. We're always Tuesday.
What's next Tuesday is?
Next Tuesday is the 5th.
The 5th.
Right. Okay, that sounds good.
We'll see you then.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hold card? So you have the letter from the DPW that was requested. And as you see, it's significantly more expensive than the funds that we have.
Which is what we expected.
Yeah. Their feeling, as I previously indicated, was to take the money and do the work and just get it done, accept the road. That will start to pay the town back based on Chapter 90. Once it's accepted, the town starts to get Chapter 90 from it. I did speak with Town Council. They felt we can take it by agreement. Even if we do take it by agreement, the, Mr. Henigan felt that we should still hold a public hearing and notify the residents just so everybody's aware of what's happening and that it doesn't get accepted and somebody has some huge issue that ultimately causes the town or the planning board problem or heartache in the future. So what we would do is we'll all contact Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, we'll want something in writing from him.
Yeah, well, there'll be, there'll be a formal agreement that's drawn up probably by Town Council. And both parties, you know, we'll have the public hearing. Both parties will agree, you know, go over what's happening, will notify the residents on the street. The agreement will be signed and then it'll go from there.
He'll be consenting to give it to us, will be consenting to receive it.
There'll be some sort of understanding that it's not going to cover the majority of the construction. The town is taking, you know, upon receipt of the funds, the town is taking ownership and is pledging to go forward and have it approved as a public road, that kind of stuff.
Then they'll do the reconstruction, reconstruction of that section.
And the nice thing is it's cash. So once the agreement is signed, we go to the bank and they can spend the money. It's not, you know, trying to get an insurance company to give it to us or...
And Bill's in agreement.
Yeah, Joanna wrote the letter, but her and Bill have talked about it multiple times.
Joanna is...
The assistant town is there. She does a lot of the paving work, the bid work, all that kind of stuff.
Have we got eight?
Yep, so when are you going to schedule the public hearing?
I'll have to talk to Town Council about getting the agreement put together. I imagine it's March, almost. It would probably be early, probably be late April, something like that.
Yeah, because after that, they just...
But if the DPW knows that it's coming, it wouldn't, it wouldn't happen until their next bid cycle, which doesn't start until July 1st. So if I talk to Bill now, they can include that in their estimates. They can start doing their quantities, measurements, all that kind of stuff. We're moving through the process. I don't imagine there'll be any hangups. If there are, they can always pull it out of their bid and they can use that, those funds for something else. I mean, it's not an unheard of situation.
All right, so that's what we've done.
And hopefully make sure or institute some changes somewhere that don't allow this type of thing to happen again.
That's right, yeah.
So we've got signatures and minutes?
And new business?
Signatures, 444 Washington Street, special permit. Anybody have any questions?
Please sign that one because it needs to not be two-sided because it has to be written. I'll have to get someone to come and sign it. Figure out if John's around. Thank you.
New business.
All right, so you all got a copy of some draft rules and rights in your packets? Well, some of you did, some of you got them by email or request. Those are my proposals for the new subdivision rules and regulations for the planning board for the Town of Auburn. That is the draft. It's been many years in coming. I am expecting to hold a public hearing in April, the first meeting in April, to have this board vote on approving those. So please begin reviewing them. If you have questions, don't hesitate to call me.
They might want to just come up and...
That's fine.
Sit with you one day or...
Yep, if somebody wants to come up and sit with me, we can, I always have time to sit down. It may be easy to call and just make sure that I'm either around or not in another meeting. But, you know, we tried to do this once before and the last time we tried to go through it at the meetings and it doesn't work, so...
It's too much at a meeting.
Yeah, we should go through it ourselves, I think, and then make our notes.
Correct. I would, you have two options.
Because what do we compare it against? We have to have the old one?
Yeah. The old ones, the old ones are on the website if you don't have them. I can get you a copy if you need them. Honestly, what I would say is these don't compare to the old ones. There's no simple, easy way to put them side by side and say, this section is this section. Because what I did was I threw the old ones out and I put together new ones. So it's not, it's not as if there's a logical progression that, you know, Section 24 in the old one is the same as Section 24 in this one.
Is the index labeled the same way? It's not, okay.
No, it just, the old one is, it was just such, in such a different way. It was a format and a layout and content that it still to this day is completely foreign to me. I've used it multiple times and I, I don't understand it. So I couldn't conceive of trying to update it. I went straight for, let's just start building what makes sense to put in there. And so I built something new.
Okay, so it really would make sense just for me where I'm unfamiliar with the other one just to go through and anything I have questions?
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, that's the best way to do it. We can put something on the 26th of March to have a discussion session on people's questions. Or everybody can come to me individually and we can have discussions on your questions then. That's, that's up to you guys.
What you're doing here is if you don't have the other one right in front of you and he said it's not even, well, you're reading something and say, well, what did the other one say?
And that's, you know, my question is exactly...
And then when we ask, you know, like when the attorneys return something to me, they'll redline the old one and then you look at the other one, you say, oh, and it says this now, you can tell. Even at that, it's not the easiest thing, but...
Well, there was no way to, you know, do that on Word Doc and track changes because like you said, I was, you had to throw the...
Yeah, I mean, it was just, it didn't, I didn't feel comfortable trying to parse the old one apart and put new stuff in. I felt more comfortable with just, this is what I wanted to say and this is what I wanted to do. It's hopefully more comprehensive. It has more design requirements in it. It has more references to construction standards. And it gets more specific about the plans and the surety. It increases fees.
That was one of my questions.
Those fees are about middle of the road. I did a comparison probably 12 or 18 months ago. And those are right along with what most other communities are charging. We're not making back what it costs us to process these applications. And, you know, the amount of time that me and my staff spend on mailings, filings, you know, chasing reviews, chasing applicants, it's not reflected in the fees that we charge now. And it's more realistically reflected in the fees that we or that I've proposed in the alteration.
Which you say are comparable to other towns.
I say it's comparable to some other towns, you know?
People assume that some of what they're paying in taxes goes towards this.
Well, and, you know, I was going to, it's not expected to cover all of the costs of Adam's staff and time.
No, but we are, we are allowed to cha, to charge fees up to the point that we are recouping cost. We can't charge fees in order to make money.
Offset, right.
But we can charge fees that offset the work based on that. And development review, while part of a, the work required for a, for an employee of a town, isn't necessarily a tax base, a sole, the sole funds shouldn't come from tax base. The people who aren't paying taxes, in a sense, and are coming to do the development should also bear some of the burden of the cost. And that's, that's sort of what I looked at when I did that.
We'll look at them.
Yeah, and that's all, you know, and again, I'm happy to answer any questions. There's a whole new set of forms at the back end, there's new road cross-sections. I worked closely with Bill and Joanna on some of the construction standards. I talked to the sewer department. It's been sent around internally to the departments and to the water department for their review and comment as well. And hopefully we're going to get it to a point that it's actually a functional and less gray document, so a little bit more, this is what we want people to do.
Well, over the years, we've talked about a lot of things that ought to be different, so... But I think I may just come up with you and sit with you, even if it takes a couple of times and go through it and then I'll have my own notes and... Because you could readily say, well, the other one more or less said this.
Mm-hmm.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, no, I'm...
Well, we've got...
Minutes?
Minutes?
I've moved, we've got a minute, because...
Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. We got a memorandum.
That was for the last hearing. From Nick? Oh, from, oh, yeah.
No, it's a memorandum from...
From me?
From the DCG to the chairman of the zoning board and to the planning board.
Mm-hmm. The majority of that memo is irrelevant based on the actions of the zoning board on Thursday. They chose to require that the entrance be offset by 20 feet from Cumberland's original proposal. So Cumberland accepted that and they will be in on the 12th to discuss that with this board as far as getting their site plan.
Moving it back, so northerly on...
Northern, yes, north on South Street.
Okay, let me just look at this for a minute. Yeah, it was the first statement. It has come to the attention of the Development Coordinating Group that the Zoning Board of Appeals would like notification of those projects that attend DCG meetings. So don't most of the projects go through them anyways?
Through the DCG? It's a voluntary process, so I would...
So an applicant does or does not have to go through?
Does not, they're not required to. I would say it's generally encouraged. Of those applicants that go to the zoning board, I would say probably between 35 and 50% go to DCG, depending on the year. In general, the DCG provides guidance, does not provide condition of they have to do this and this. In general, the DCG provides guidance, does not provide condition of they have to do this and this. We talk about the site with them, give them anecdotal knowledge of what may have happened previously on the site, what certain departments may be looking for. Now that the building inspector is staffing the zoning board, he's brought up issues to the zoning board of things that have come up at DCG and they've-
When you say staffing the zoning board?
He goes to the zoning board meetings. The zoning board then requested that they get memorandums outlining discussion from the zoning board on projects that go there. Or discussion from the DCG on ZBA projects that, that go in front of that group.
We sign that one? Correspondence, none, and we can't talk about what you wanted to say, Bob? Now, Adam, when are they coming next?
They're coming on the 12th of March, which is why you have to be here. They were coming on the 5th of March and then everybody said, I won't be here on the 5th of March. So I contacted them and said, sorry, guys, we have to push you back a week. So I'm not, I can't call them again and say, no, sorry, guys, you should come now on the 5th.
Yeah, but if they wanted to, if they wanted to postpone, they just come and postpone five times in a row. I'm just, I, I think I'll be here and I think-
I know I'll be here.
Jim said he'll be here and John said he'll be here.
John, okay.
Because John-
I didn't think it was tonight that he was, maybe he's just not here.
Oh, it was you who wouldn't be here on the 5th?
Correct.
It was John tonight.
So, well, yeah, it was John tonight, it was you on the 5th.
You're right.
You remember? A little late, though.
I said at the beginning of the meeting.
You said it at the beginning.
Believe me, but we weren't listening.
So, yeah, because I think everybody wants to have something to say there. And when we see like what we looked at before, it's... All right, anything else?
No.
The motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.